I call this meeting of the Conroe and Penne School District Board of Trustees to order. Let the record show that a quorum of members is present, that this meeting has been duly called, and that notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meeting Act, Texas Government Code Chapter 551. The time is six o'clock. Welcome, everybody. Packed house, this looks really cool. I'd like to turn some time over for our invocation to Mr. Dayton Williams and then, followed with our pledge of allegiance by Mr. Del Eman.
Please stand with me in prayer if you so choose. Heavenly Father, thank you for this day. Thank you for your love of us despite us. In that we ask that you soften our hearts as we cannot say that we love God whom we see whom we have never seen if we don't love one another that we see daily. Now give us this sermon in this meeting. Bless the kids of this district and its administration. We ask forgiveness of sins so our prayers won't be hindered. In this, let us always give you the glory. Amen.
Thank you. Please remove your hats and cross your hearts. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And to the Texas flag?
On honor to the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas state, one safe under God, one indivisible.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. You may be seated. Moving on to Item Two, our awards and recognitions. This is a lot of fun. We have Item A, Special District Recognition for our Special Olympic Powerlifting State Champ for Conroe Stars, Dr. Noel.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hubert. This is, we could clap, that's fine. That's good. It's always fun when we can celebrate state champions. We're going to get an opportunity to do that tonight. If you just listen, you can, it sounds like state champions in here. You hear all these medals clanking together. That's what champions sound like. And so, we're going to start off with some great powerlifting state champions. And to introduce our coaches, we'll have our Director of Special Education, Dr. Kendra Wiggins, to come forward.
Well, good evening, President Hubert, members of the board, and Dr. Noel. This is my favorite part of my job. So what I get to do tonight is I get to talk about our student success. And tonight, we're going to talk about our Conroe Stars, which is our Special Olympics here in Conroe ISD. The Special Olympics here in Conroe ISD actually started in 1969, which was the first year that Special Olympics was in Texas. So we were right here, starting it right in the beginning. And on our Stars, we have over 230 athletes and over 29 campuses participate. So every year, they participate in about 10 events, and we have great success. So I first want to introduce our coaches. So I have David Kite. I have Gwen Spears. Bob Peterson. Alicia Jenkins. And Brian Enman. So the, what?
Say them again.
Did I get them all? I said their names. Gwen, Gwen Spears. And Alicia Jenkins. Sorry, I'm short. So they do an amazing job leading our team, and so we're so happy to have them to support our kids. And I'm going to have David Kite, who's our leader of the group, to go ahead and introduce our athletes.
Thank you, board members. Thank you, Dr. Wiggins. First, we have Ms. Reese Adams. Come on down. George the Champion, Champion! Last and absolutely not least, Ms. Abigail Walker.
I'll be real quick. I want you to know in Conroe ISD, all means all. And we're here to celebrate these athletes today. Let's give them a round of applause.
I think we could do two rows, that'd be perfect.
State champions. Woo!
Congratulations again. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations, too.
Great job. Great job. Congratulations. That's a beautiful job. I like those medals. Wow. Great job. Haley, congratulations.
Champion, champion, huh? Good name. Good job. Great job. Great job, Angel. Great job. Congratulations. I love you. God bless you. Thanks so much. Thank you. No, thank you. You, you. Great job, great job.
One of the districts. I'm saying.
Kayla Chapman.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Congratulations.
That's very special. Appreciate everybody showing up and supporting us. It's a very special moment. But we're not done with our recognitions, are we, Dr. Noel?
No, sir. these championships for granted. There are a lot of school districts that would love to have one opportunity to celebrate a state champion every year, and that would be great. We are blessed to be able to do it quite often. Remember, last month, we celebrated wrestling state champions and animation state champions. Now, we have powerlifting state champions, and now, we're going to move forward to two more events in which we're state champions. And to make the introductions from our state champions from the Woodlands High School, we have our Head Highlander, Principal of the Woodlands High School, Dr. Ted Landry. We'll start off with our diving state champion.
Good evening, President Hubert, members of the board, Dr. Noel. Thank you guys so very much, as always, for taking the time to recognize all of our students for the wonderful things that they accomplish. You know, they keep a schedule that staggers the mind. Academically, they do what they need to do, but then they also compete at an ultra-high level. And so, first, we're going to talk about diving. So if you've ever seen diving, right, you might have watched it on the Olympics or on TV, maybe you've been to a state championship meet. And there are team sports, and then there's individual sports. And yes, the divers are part of the team, but when they're competing, to say it's an individual sport is a gross understatement. I mean, imagine yourself, you're a diver, you walk out on the end of this plank over water, the closest person to you is like 50 feet away, and you're in a Speedo. So the anxiety level must be staggering. And then, the thousands of people and the judges who are watching you are critiquing everything you do wrong. The mental strength it takes to stand on the end of that board and go through what you need to go through, and then to make your body perform at that level consistently enough to make it to the state meet, and then to succeed, is truly incredible. And these athletes, it just takes so much to watch it. You know, my heart's beating, and then you always get down to that last dive and inevitably has to hit the dive for so many points, otherwise, it doesn't win. And this young man consistently hits the dive. So it is my privilege to be able to introduce the Woodlands High School Swimming and Dive Head Coach, Coach Jeremy Wade, who will introduce us to our state champion diver.
To mimic what Dr. Landry said, again, thank you very much for having Jacob here. This is very well-deserved recognition. I want to introduce a few people who have played a key role in his development, and one is his parents. I think we have Mrs. Jones here. Mrs. Jones, please stand. Mrs. Jones? So these are two parents any coach would absolutely just love to have in their program. They're always giving their sons their full support in everything they do. Obviously, they've made a lot of sacrifices for Jacob to be at this level. And they, actually, Mrs. Jones serves on our Splash Club, and she's our dive liaison. So awesome parents to have in a program. He's had some great coaching, not only at the Conroe ISD level, the Woodlands High School. Kevin Witt is our aquatics director, and he's actually our district diving coach, and he's put in a lot of work with Jacob and continues to produce great results for not only the Woodlands High School divers, but all the divers in our school district. He could not be here today. He has obligations at the naddatorium right now, but he has played a big role in Jacob's development. Jacob's been diving since he's been nine years old. So obviously, he's had a lot of coaches that have impacted his life, and he actually dives with the Woodlands Dive Club here at the naddatorium as well. And a lot of coaches have played an impact in his success. This didn't happen in one season of high school diving or two seasons of high school diving. He's been working for this since he's been nine, and his parents have made a lot of sacrifices for him to get to this level. So I didn't want that to be unnoticed. We have amazing support in our administration, all of the staff at the Woodlands High School, from our athletic secretary, making sure we get all of our meal requests, travel requests. A lot of things go into athletics, our campus coordinators, our athletic director here at Conroe ISD, and our fearless leader, Dr. Landry, who was there on the pool deck with us last year when we won state, and he was there with us this year, watching Jacob just kind of at the end of his seat and giving us his full support. This was a fantastic season for both boys and girls. We had a lot of great accomplishments, not only from individual level, but at the team level as well. We had two new school records set. We were district and regional champions, and our boys' team finished third at state, and our girls were state runner-up. But one of our greatest accomplishments this season came from this young man here, sophomore, Jacob Jones. Last year, as a freshman, he took the silver medal at state, and just by less than half a point. Like Dr. Landry said, there's a lot of judgment that goes into diving, and any little judgment that, half a point here or there, it could go one way or another. But incredible accomplishment as a freshman to win the silver medal. This year, Jacob had to overcome a lot. He got sick several times throughout the season. He had his wisdom teeth taken out, so training was not as consistent as he would have liked it to have been. And believe it or not, he was actually second at district, and he was second at regionals this year. At the state meet, Jacob broke out in hives due to an allergic reaction. So the first day of competition, he was on Benadryl, continuing to overcome obstacles, obviously not feeling his best. Jacob didn't let any of these obstacles get in his way at the state meet. He was determined to win, and in fact, after regionals, he took second. He looked me in my eye, and he said, "I'm going to win state," and I believed him. Jacob went into the last round at the state meet, and he was the last diver to go. He found himself in a familiar spot, which was second. He was second last year as a freshman, second at district this year, second at regionals. He didn't let any of that pressure get to him. He ripped his last dive to capture this year's state title. Jacob, we're so incredibly proud of your resilience, all of your hard work, and we look forward to what you will do in the next two years as a Highlander.
I won't be quite as brief as Mr. Sanders was, but I will keep it short. He doesn't know it, but I had the opportunity to watch this young man dive as a young diver in club, and I noticed him back then. All of our student athletes, any extracurricular activity, robotics band, sports, whatever it is, the dedication that these students put into their craft is absolutely amazing. But as has already been said, the dedication and the time commitment that our divers make, early mornings, late nights, there's not a naddatorium on every corner. These are long-distance travels to these meets, and these parents and these students put in so much effort into honing their craft and succeeding. And I would just encourage you, that's something that will serve you for the rest of your life. When you're not able to get out there on that board anymore, you will still have that dedication, and the things that you learned in diving will still help you in life. And you're carrying on a wonderful tradition. I'm a Highlander myself. You know, the swimming and diving program at Woodlands High School and at McCullough before that, you are in a long line of wonderful tradition, and we're very proud of you and thank you for your effort. And thank you to the parents for all that you do as well.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Coach, thank you for having me. Appreciate you.
Woodlands proud of you, Jacob. Great job.
Good to see you next year. Thank you. Congratulations.
Wonderful job. Congratulations.
We got another Dr. Landry side.
Here we go. Another state champion. I think this is great, just to see that we have opportunities for every kid, and there's a way to not only excel but compete. And so, here we go. Another state championship for the Woodlands High School, Dr. Landry.
Another state championship. Good evening again, and thank you again. You know, we talked about an individual diver, and now, we've changed gears to truly a team effort. Robotics is relatively new in the UIL competition standing, but if you've never been to a robotics competition, it's not what you have in your head. Trust me. It is one of the most intense things you have ever seen. So I'm sure Ms. Hamel's going to talk a little bit about it, but you know, you're there, you've got two robots in a pit, and every year, there's a new challenge, so these kids have to start from scratch every year. They are wicked smart, right? They do the engineering, they do the fabrication, the assembly, the programming and coding. There's phases. The first phase of this thing is it's autonomous. The robot has to do what you program it to do exactly. And then, there's a driving component, and there's always inevitably something to be manipulated and points to be scored, and it's all timed. So you're sitting on the edge of the seat, this clock is ticking down like a bomb ready to go off, and you're just trying to get points. It's like watching March Madness. It's the Final Four, it's basketball, it's, you know, it's just very exciting. So if you've never been, I truly encourage you to do so because it is fully engaging. And these kids are fantastic. They're smart, they're wonderful to be around, and you can see the joy on their face as they are participating in what they love to do. We are going to be well-served in our future to have these students leading the way for us. So it is my privilege to introduce our Head Robotics Coach, and she teaches the highest level of physics we offer at the Woodlands High School, Ms. Lauren Hamel.
As I brag on these guys, they did bring the robot, and we'll run it a little bit for you so you can see what it does. So I'm Lauren Hamel. Can I just come on up? I'm the Head Robotics Coach at the Woodlands High School. I'm joined by one of our other coaches, Jennifer Davies is back there in the corner. But like I said, I'm here to brag on these guys and the amazing robot that we built. So we started our FTC Robotics Program at the Woodlands High School four years ago. We had one team of about 10 students. At this point, we have five teams that serve over 50 students, and it's continuing to grow each year. So the way our season works, it starts beginning of September. That's when we figure out what the challenge is that year. It's top secret until then. And then, these students work through April is when our season ends. So it's a full-year commitment. They work many, many hours each week. In addition to all their other extracurriculars, we have students in athletics, fine arts, all sorts of other activities as well. But like Dr. Landry said, we find out the challenge for that year. This year, our game's called Freight Frenzy, so this year's challenge was shipping and delivery themed. I think it was a little more relevant than they were. But anyway, what the robot does, it does a variety of tasks, but the most prominent task is it picks up what's called freight, and it delivers them to certain shipping hub locations on our robotics field. So the way it works is we design, we have five teams, so we have five completely different robots. It's up to each team to come up with their design that they think's going to accomplish the task the best. So we designed all of our robots completely from scratch, so it's completely fabricated and designed by the students, no kits or anything like that. So this is uniquely their design, and then, out of our five teams this year, this was the one that made it all the way to the state championship. So they designed, we use CAD, so the computer-aided design as well as far as designing it, and then custom-making 3D-printed parts. And then, like Dr. Landry talked about, we have programmers as well that make the robot go, both autonomously and driver-controlled at matches. Everyone gets their hands on the robot at some point, but when we go to events, we have teams that, we have a drive team that drives the robots, we have kids that work on it if something breaks, we have kids that sit up in the stands and they scout and collect data the whole day because there is kind of a partner selection component when you make it to playoffs. So everyone is involved in some way or another with the robot. But I want to brag on these kids even more because a huge part of our program is not just the robot. That's actually the slogan of First Robotics, it's more than robots. A huge focus for us as well is community outreach, STEM-focused outreach. So this team in particular actually started and runs our largest and most impactful outreach program to date. It's called Pasta Bots Junior. It's actually an after-school STEM program for elementary-school-age students. They actually come into our lab after school, and we have different activities with a different kind of theme each week where we build things and make things. It's a really cool program. We're looking for ways to expand it. Right now, we have 18 students in it. We're looking for ways to grow it, so we make sure we reach as many students as possible and hopefully get some future Pasta Bots from that as well. So this robot made it to the state championship. For UIL purposes, we can only take one team, so this is our top team. I'll finish by bragging on their performance at state. It was actually our statistically-best competition ever. We were undefeated. We've never had that before. We played 10 matches, did not lose a single match, including in the playoffs, which is a best-of-three. We never played a third match. We won all the way through. So it was an impressive showing. They're great, obviously, engineers, but they're great students, and then a tenement of First Robotics is they're great, gracious professionals as well. So I want to brag on them. So I guess I'll go ahead and introduce you guys. So first one I've got is Emiliano Alcazar. And then, I've got Ethan Brumberger. She is actually a pitcher on the softball team and had a game tonight. So the next one, I'm going to give him a special shout-out. It's Stone Hong. He is the only one that has actually been with us all four years, so I've had Stone since he was a freshman. He is twice now our TWHS Robotics President, and he's also team captain for this team. And then, last but not least, Jeffrey Ju. He is our lead programmer. Thank you guys so much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hang on, hang on. I'm going to get a picture first, and then, Ms. Whackerman's going to speak.
All right. Wonderful. Well, I will say, great programs start with great educators. So thank you for your and So thank you for your enthusiasm and all that you bring to this incredible program. We thank you for that. Absolutely. Absolutely. And to you all, I will say, congratulations. Your enthusiasm was so obvious. Meeting you outside, each and every one of you so ecstatic about talking about your, your robot, what it does, how it does it. And then what I enjoyed the most was your camaraderie in all of this. When you leave high school, when you move on, I hope that you remember this great time that you had putting this together, the trials and tribulations, all the time that it took to get to the top. Not so much the win. I mean, yes, the gold is awesome and, and that is very exciting, but in the end, the camaraderie, the working together and, and making it all happen. So congratulations to each and every one of you and go Highlanders.
All right. Here we go. Work your way around. Who's gonna start us off? There you are. You're the guy. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations to you.
Good job.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
I'm in awe of you guys.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Wonderful job. Wonderful job.
Awesome.
Congratulations.
So awesome.
Congratulations.
So awesome.
So you guys are smarter than all of us.
Congratulations.
God bless you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Wonderful job. Wonderful job. Outstanding. Outstanding.
Great job.
Appreciate you so much.
Thank you.
Great job.
So between you and me, you're smarter than all of us together.
Awesome job.
Highest physics.
Congratulations.
Great job.
Awesome. Thank you.
And I, if I could, just one second, I, I was gonna ask Ms. Hamel, just a, I'm gonna ask you just a follow-up question if I can. Um, if you go back to 2019, you'll remember that we had a, we had a bond election in 2019 and as part of that bond election was in addition at the Woodlands High School because we talked about, uh, not only did they need increased capacity at the Woodlands High School, but the Woodlands High School being built in 1995 didn't have many of the facilities that a current newer building would have. And one of those facilities that they did not have at the Woodlands High School was a robotics lab. And so this year's been their first year in a robotics lab and this is how I just thought maybe you could share with us, what, what kind of difference did that make in your program?
For us, it's been a, a huge game changer. Um, for example, um, our field, uh, we didn't even have, we had two thirds of a field set up in a closet before this and now we actually have a full field so we can practice. We got new machinery. We have workspace where we can actually, instead of being in a traditional classroom, we actually have work tables. Um, so for us, having the size program we have, uh, it's made a huge difference actually having space that's meant to be used the way we need to use it. So, um, for us, it's, it's been a huge game changer. We'll continue to be.
That's great. So I just want to say thank you to the board. Thank you to our community for investing in these kids and giving them this opportunity. So, thank you all.
Good job.
Thank you.
That's awesome.
Um, moving on to item two D, special board recognition. Dr. Noel, turn that over to you.
All right. Once again, uh, just another, um, month here, we're with a very special award. I think all of us in education, we get into education because we want to change lives. Uh, and in, in our view, uh, it's an opportunity to save lives, right? To put people on a different path. But there are those moments, um, where truly savings lives becomes, um, the number one priority in a given moment. And once again, we have that. Uh, and so I'm gonna ask Mr. Chris McCord, our Assistant Superintendent of Operations, to come up and introduce us to another Conroe ISD lifesaver.
Good evening, President Hubert, members of the board and Dr. Noel. Tonight I have the honor of presenting to you Mr. Frederick Proctor for special recognition for saving a life of a Conroe ISD employee who was in great distress while eating lunch. Mr. Proctor was performing his duties at Bosman Intermediate on the day of Tuesday, March 22nd. While obtaining ice for his cup during lunch, fate brought him into proximity of one of our employees in great need in the midst of prolonged choking. Through the combination of being in the right place at the right time, instantly recognizing the situation and stepping up when needed, he was able to perform the Heimlich maneuver, dislodging the item from the airway and literally saving a valued life. Our staff member who was saved wants to remain anonymous at this time, but expresses their sincere gratitude to Mr. Proctor for his efforts. To our staff members who are present here tonight or viewing online, it's a good opportunity to remind of the, uh, trainings we do each August to prepare for situations we may or may never face. One of those is properly performing the Heimlich maneuver. So in saying this, I present to you tonight for special recognition, Mr. Frederick Proctor.
To the, um, first giving it on to God, who's the head of my life. Um, without any of this, it would not be possible. To the board, Dr. Noel, Deidre, um, to my beautiful wife, my family, to my, to my administrators at, uh, Bosman, uh, to my two brothers, Dr. Todd and, uh, Coach Marlowe, um, I really thank you. Um, truly I was there at the right place at the right time. Uh, need I got, when I go in there, uh, this could have been turned into something else. Uh, we have to keep in mind that, uh, man know, does not know the day nor the hour when God will call his name, but sometimes something could come through and, uh, save you and, um, postpone that and you can live a little longer. And I was just right there at that time. Again, I say thank you and, uh, continue to do our trainings and keep up with everything that we do because it just might be you in that situation one day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Seems like it's more than right place at the right time sometimes, you know? When you are prepared, you shall not fear. That man was prepared. Appreciate it. Appreciate everybody who helped make that man be prepared to, to save that life. Thank you so much to all of you. Uh, moving on to item three, citizen participation. Ms. Godfrey, do we have anybody signed up tonight?
Yes, we do.
Great. Please keep in mind that while this meeting is held in public form, the purpose of this meeting is for the Board of Trustees to conduct the business of the district. In accordance with the Texas Open Meeting Act, Texas Government Code Chapter 551, the Board Policy BED, if a patron, excuse me, if a patron during public comments addresses an issue that is on tonight's posted agenda, the board will defer its discussion of that issue until the item is reached on the agenda. For any issue that is not on the board's posted agenda, the board cannot and will not deliberate or make a decision related to that issue. Speakers who have signed up to address the board during public comment must make all comments to the Board of Trustees and not to the audience. The board has specific policies under which the board considers complaints. If your purpose is to seek some type of remedy, the board cannot discuss or respond to your concern until you have met the requirements of the appropriate district policy. Accordingly, the board will not hear complaints or derogatory comments about individual students or staff during public comment. Information about how to file a complaint is located on the district's website. The board expects that everyone in attendance will conduct themselves respectfully regardless of whether they agree or disagree with the speaker's message. Interrupting speakers or this meeting will not be tolerated. To ensure that the board can effectively conduct the district's business, each of the speakers who have registered to address the board will be given three minutes to present their comments. Each speaker's time will be displayed on the screen around the room. When the countdown timer reaches zero, the next speaker will be called. Ms. Godfrey, will you please call our first person?
Patrina English.
Good evening, Board of Trustees. Again, I'm Patrina English. I have a daughter in the sixth grade here in Conroe Independent School District. In 2019, my family and I relocated here to Texas. My 12-year-old had the privilege of in-class learning before COVID. Unfortunately, during her class learning, we had a few negative experiences. On one occasion, no one knew her whereabouts in the school. She experienced bullying and another student of another ethnicity assaulted her. As a minority within the Conroe CISD, it can pose a disadvantage. But I see this as an opportunity to address these issues, perhaps with cultural sensitivity awareness training for CISD. In 2020, you implemented a year-long staff development plan that covered various aspects of diversity training on each campus where the trainees mirrored the student demographic. It also included curriculum resources that honor students' cultural and life experiences. And lastly, I noted social and emotional learning was introduced. Various components included skills to help build communities by having courageous conversations where students are equipped to confront injustice, hate and inequality. In light of this, I have two questions. What was the overall outcome? And are the metrics available for review? Is there an active program for parents to get involved to help address the social issues our students are experiencing, experiencing? And I, so I've presented my concerns and would like a follow-up after today's meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Evan Berlin.
Uh, good evening, President Hubert, members of the board, Dr. Noel. Uh, my name is Evan Berlin. I'm a proud graduate, uh, product of CISD. Uh, I went through the program, uh, the district from fourth grade until graduating, also from the Woodlands High School, uh, more than 15 years ago, returned, uh, and now am back in the district, uh, living east of I-45 in Conroe. There are two things I want to talk about tonight. Uh, one is appreciation and the second is focus. Uh, first, I want to express my appreciation to the district and the board for its public service. As an adult, I understand now the massive responsibilities that you have, uh, serving the best interests of the students and parents. As a student, however, I was not aware of these responsibilities, although I did greatly benefit from them. In fact, I truly largely attribute my personal and professional journey to the foundational experiences within the district. So again, I want to thank you all for your service and caring for decades of strong leadership. For this exact same reason, I also want to give a personal perspective on some things I believe that make our district exemplary and present the opportunity, uh, for continued focus, programming, special education and mental health and at-risk youth. Access to equitable programming is necessary to developing well-rounded students. Supporting clubs, organizations, athletics and other extracurriculars just that we've done tonight is mission critical. My access to quality programming helped me develop the soft skills I needed in order to be responsible and supportive community member and productive employee. So seeing all of these accomplished students here tonight is truly encouraging and I'm proud to see the, uh, the longstanding history of leadership. The second element here is special education and mental health. I know there are many, many items, uh, that this, uh, encompasses and, uh, but I want to focus on one that's personal to me and that's early detection. I didn't realize until I was in college that I had dyslexia for numbers. I grew up, uh, within the district, uh, saying, slow down on your math test, double check your work, and that wasn't the root cause. I know the district is making strides in this area and I applaud them for that, uh, and I hope that , uh, early detection is possible, uh, going forward. Finally, uh, at-risk youth. Roughly 39% of students in the district are considered at-risk. I was not part of this statistic while in CISD, but I did spend eight days in foster care as an infant and it's something that I can't think about or that I think about every single day about what it could be like. And I mention this for the sole purpose of bringing awareness to this large number, which is 39%. The district is the sum of many, but at the highest level is a community. And I believe that there are things that the district and the community can do to work together to focus on reducing this number at scale. In closing, I want to reiterate my appreciation for the work that you all do. And again, uh, I simply wanted to underscore the importance of continued focus on programming, special education, mental health and at-risk youth. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rachel Walker.
Good evening, President Hubert, members of the board, Dr. Noel. Um, nice to see you again. I'm sure you know I'm probably here. Um, recently I connected with a parent in CISD that, um, their child is experiencing some bullying. Um, their student came to school wearing they/them pin and felt proud and comfortable and have been continued to be harassed and followed around by a group of students who continue to shout Bible verses at them, which to some may not seem intimidating, but it's not. It's being done in a, in a form of bullying. Um, this parent has reached out to administration and yet nothing has been done and it continues to happen. So at the very beginning of the meeting, which was my favorite part, um, we were reminded that in CISD, all means all. And I think the issue that we're having is for some of us, all means all if it equates with our beliefs. But that's not what it means to be in CISD. All means all means that when you come to school, your basic needs are met. I'm sure that some of you are familiar, familiar with the pyramid of basic needs. At the very low level, we have food, we have water, we have shelter. Above that, we have safety, but right above that, we have acceptance. And when we're not meeting those basic needs of our students, we are hindering their learning. And it's not fair that some children come to school and their, their learning is hindered every day just because of who they are. So I've brought this with me tonight. I would have loved to have printed everyone a copy, but I don't know if you've seen the prices of ink lately, so I will email it to you. Um, this, and I'm running out of time, but this is HRC's Welcoming Schools 2021 Annual Report. I'm just gonna read a little bit of it to you. This inaugural welcoming schools report from the Human Rights Campaign celebrates the accomplishments of a program that began as a local community effort with a small group of parents in elementary schools and has grown to a national program committed to affirming LGBTQ youth and children in pre-K through 12, schools across the United States. Educators are facing unprecedented challenges with both the pandemic and onslaught of anti-LGBTQ bills that target our most vulnerable youth. The data is clear. Positive outcomes for LGBTQ youth rely on educators who have the skills and passion to create safe, affirming school environments. Dr. Noel, you mentioned that part of getting into education is not only wanting to make a difference, but it's to save lives. We're not saving lives if a student is coming to school and continued to be bullied. So I'm gonna leave this with you. I hope that you read it. I'm gonna email it to the rest of you guys and I would love for CISD, if not this program, some kind of program that can give educators the tools that they need when they don't know what to do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Rachel.
Robert Holden.
I don't know if I should put my pronoun up there or not, but. Okay. I'm Bob Holden and first, I want to thank you for accepting the contract for which you were hired, all of you on the school board. It's a short-term contract and it pays the true minimum wage. This also reflects your awareness that it is the duty of all of us to truly serve. You, you're giving up a lot in return and that's great. And it seems particularly applicable today since it's Patriots Day. Not to have been part of my spoken presentation, but for clarification because it has other implications, I'd like to correct what could be misinterpreted. The Democrat Party, yes, did vote God out of their platform. And yes, the Democrat Party refused to mention the word God even once in their annual convention, but it is still listed on their platform. Just a little correction there. And you were hired to ensure that the children receive the greatest amount of knowledge that can be imparted during the time that they're under your guidance. Unfortunately, you've really failed greatly. Having lived many years in other countries, I noticed beginning in the 1980s how people around the world began to laugh at Americans based on their lack of education. Unfortunately, I have many friends in other countries, so I do get a lot of information that people here often don't. We're far from a world-class education system, though we are the most costly. As Thomas Sowell, arguably the greatest educator of the last hundred years, once said, paraphrasing him, "If American government education were a business, it would be no longer in existence because of the quality of its product." Now Skeeter, as the current president, this monkey fit. This monkey is resting squarely on your back, and it's a heavy burden. The cost, you were mentioning cost of lives. I'm looking at cost of lives. I'm looking at, we may be in the beginning of a World War III, and as a result, I believe, of our people not having critical thinking skills, looking at trivia and not considering what is important, and they may not be able to differentiate that. You're being influenced by money from other agencies, which may or may not have springs attached. Refuse that money. It's not a significant amount of your overall budget, and it does not help you achieve that for which you were hired, and that is to be an independent school district. Do not compromise that goal. Many believe that government education cannot be fixed. Over the last few decades, it's become obvious that the more money we throw at it, the worse it gets. I've seen it all over the country. And right now, we're seeing it with our textbooks. I knew a school board several years ago that went overseas for other textbooks because they couldn't find one manufactured in the United States that was adequate. And now Florida's going through that same. I'm assuming our textbooks are American textbooks and may be inadequate. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
That's it.
That's all of ours? Okay. Thank you for those who participated. Moving to item four, our consent agenda. I have not heard from anybody to remove anything, so I'd like to entertain a motion.
Move approved. Consent agenda is presented. Second to motion.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor show by the uplifted hand. Any opposed by the same sign? Very good. If it is okay, I'd like for us to move item 12A through C up, if that's okay with...
That'd be a great idea. What's that? That'd be a great idea.
All right. Item 12A, named principal of Grand Oaks High School.
Dr. Knoll. All right. Thank you, Mr. Hubert. As we've spoke of in the last few months, it's that time of year as we begin our planning for next school year. And we start with Grand Oaks High School. As we celebrated Dr. Chris Povich being elevated to our Assistant Superintendent for High Schools, that left a really large shoes to fill there at Grand Oaks, and we're fortunate to have a lot of opportunity and people applying to want to lead that campus. Our committee worked hard and identified what we feel is a perfect candidate. Mr. James Bush is the current principal of Conroe High School 9th Grade Campus. He is known as being a man that builds strong relationships, provides for a great culture in the building, but is also seen as one of our greatest instructional leaders on the secondary level. We feel confident that he is the right person to lead Grand Oaks and take the next step following the wonderful start that Dr. Povich has given them. So I am honored tonight to make the recommendation of Mr. James Bush to be the principal of Grand Oaks High School.
A move we approve is recommended.
A second. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? His family doesn't want to talk or anything? That's fair enough. All right? All those in favor show by the uplifted hand. Any opposed by the same sign? Congratulations, Dr. Knoll.
President Hubert, members of the Board of Trustees, and Dr. Knoll, thank you for this tremendous opportunity. Joining me tonight is my beautiful wife, Ashley, my father, David, a retired educator, and my sister, DeeDee, a Pete Cub counselor. I appreciate their support, their encouragement, and their ability to keep me centered on everything that is important in life. To the Conroe Tiger community, thank you for believing in me and for giving me the opportunity to grow. Thank you, Tasha Smith. Thank you, Roger, and the entire staff of Conroe High School's 9th Grade Campus. You all bleed gold and white. Many of them are here tonight, and I want to say thank you. It's been a privilege to steer a part of the flagship throughout the last two years as we've surmounted the waves of a pandemic, of growth in construction, and everything in between.
There you go.
And at Conroe ISD, we talk about growing our own, and I'm an example of this. Thank you, Mr. Greg Colson. I interviewed with this man five years ago at the Woodlands High School 9th Grade Campus, and he asked me what I wanted to do in five years. And with his support and mentorship, we've realized that five-year goal. I hope that you enjoy your time away, and only ask that you don't change your cellphone number. To the Grand Oaks community and Grizzly Nation, if you're here or you're watching us online, I'm so excited to meet you. I'm excited to learn about you and learn with you. Dr. Povich and his staff have done incredible work in such a short time to build a solid foundation. I'm looking forward to working with Dr. P. and continuing the legacy that he created. Our mission together will be to continue to build upon those roots and grow Grand Oaks High School into the premier learning community in C I S D. We're going to equip our students with skills, we'll empower them with a purpose, and impact the community. Grand Oaks Grizzlies, we'll represent the growl and make this board proud.
Nice.
Let's go.
Congratulations. Good job. I want to copyright it.
Congratulations.
I'd like to thank my son Blake, gave him a little bit of training.
Right, huh? Right up anything now.
Right, training. That's awesome. Congratulations. Item B, named Director of Bilingual and ESL Programs.
All right. Well, before we move on to naming the new Director of Bilingual ESL, I want to take a moment just to celebrate another person here, because we made a transition, which was a transfer. So transfers don't get to have their moment here with the board to be celebrated, but this lady deserves celebration. Darren Carlisle served as our Director of Bilingual and ESL Programs for many years, and she's now accepted a transfer to the position of Director of Curriculum Instruction and Professional Learning. So now she's gone from ESL to overseeing the entire department. And so she's here tonight, and I just want to take a chance to celebrate her. Darren, if you could stand up so we could clap for you. So with that move, we have a vacancy at the Director of Bilingual and ESL Programs. And once again, so many great candidates and opportunity here for people, but we had the perfect candidate in-house as one of our principals. Mr. Alberto Lozano has served as an outstanding principal in Conroe ISD. He has led four different campuses, I believe, and at every stop, his campuses are seen as not only one of the most outstanding in the district, but across the state. Numerous awards. And so along that path, he actually opened two brand-new schools, including, most recently, Hope Elementary. But he's always carried himself in the right manner. Schools have always outperformed, and we know that he will be a perfect person to lead our entire bilingual ESL department. So I would like to make that recommendation to you tonight, that we name Alberto Lozano as a Director of Bilingual and ESL Programs.
All right. Do we have a motion?
I'm going.
Go ahead, Ms. Smith.
My move we approve is recommended.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, show by the uplifted hand. Any opposed by the same sign? Motion carries. Congratulations, Mr. Lozano.
President Hubert, members of the board, Dr. Knoll. I am beyond honored for the opportunity to begin a new chapter in Conroe ISD as the Director of Bilingual and ESL Programs. This department, as mentioned, has well-established roots in vast practices in providing exceptional instructional guidance, and I am ready to pursue the work. I came to the United States from Reynosa, Mexico, where I was 70-year-old boy, a 70-year-old boy who picked asparagus in the fields of Blue Impara, Minnesota. A 70-year-old boy who slept in the back of a pickup truck working the onion fields of Flaudetta, Texas, with six brothers, excuse me, and sisters, I'm sorry, new to the country, new to the culture, and new to the language, I struggled to read until the 5th grade. Reading English was difficult. But teachers like Ms. Gonzalez and Mr. Warren of West Loco ISD really made a difference. With all the challenges and obstacles that students are presented today, language does not have to be one of them. I look forward to leading our school district and providing the difference for our students: hard work, perseverance, guidance, and inspiration to the fine people around me and God's greatest blessings bring before me to you today. Of the wonderful people that made a difference for me, thank you to Edith Saucela Absha for bringing me to Conroe ISD, making a recommendation to Vivian Pratt at Anderson Elementary to take a chance with me back in 2004. Thank you to the staff, as Dr. Knoll mentioned, at Anderson, Patterson, Mylum, and Hope Elementary. Working alongside you has been filled with greatness, privileges of my career. Thank you to my in-laws, Farin and Paula Griffin, who constantly support us in every way, including delivering the best oatmeal cookies in the world. Thank you to my mom and dad, who taught me the most important character traits, hard work and grit. Gracias por todo el trabajo y por enseñarme a hacer lo mismo. Thank you to my three sons for challenging and inspiring me to be better. Daniel, who's in Tennessee with his wife, Jamile. Caleb, who's here tonight with his fiancee, Ashley. And Jacob, who's also here tonight. I am proud to say all five of them are Conroe ISD graduates. Thank you to my biggest cheerleader here with us tonight, our joyful daughter, Gabby. She always makes me feel like a celebrity. And to my beautiful wife, Angela, who's always prayfully stands by my side in everything I pursue. Thank you again for this opportunity.
Yes, sir.
Congratulations, Ms. Lozano. All right. Moving on to item C, the anticipated naming of our new Director of Athletics, Dr. Knoll.
All right. Coach, the hardest thing you're going to have to do in your time here is following that speech. Sorry about that. You know, we do take a lot of pride in growing our own, and you've seen the product of that this evening, but there also are those opportunities where, as a premier school district, where we go out and seek the very best to come and join us. And we're fortunate that we have those type of people that want to apply and get here and be a part of the Conroe ISD family. We're going to make a recommendation this evening for Chris Ferris to become our new Athletic Director. I want to just share with you a little bit about him. A very seasoned athletic administrator. Been a head athletic director up in Birdville, a multi-high school, school district in the Dallas-Fort Worth area for about 10 years. Before that, served as an Assistant Athletic Director in the Plano ISD. So he's very familiar both with multiple high schools, also very familiar with very large high schools, like we have here in Conroe ISD. So that's going to serve us well, that level of experience. You know, it's not every day when you're doing reference checks to hire a new Athletic Director that the people you call are the Director of Athletics for the U I L and the President of the Texas High School Athletic Directors Association, but that's exactly who I talked to and received nothing but rave reviews. In addition to that, he was named the Texas High School Athletic Directors Association Athletic Director of the Year back in 2016, and actually, this summer, he will be inducted into the Texas High School Athletic Directors Association Hall of Honor, and he's going to do that wearing a Conroe ISD cap now. All right? So I'm proud to make the recommendation of Mr. Chris Ferris to be our new Athletic Director.
All right. Very good. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor show by the uplifted hand. And any opposed by the same sign? Very good. Welcome.
Good evening, President Hubert, members of the board, and Dr. Knoll. I'd like to start by introducing my amazing wife, Lacey, of almost 27 years now. Perhaps she probably deserves most of the applause for putting up with me for those 27 years. First and foremost, I want to thank you for this tremendous opportunity. I am grateful and feel honored to join the Conroe Independent School District and look forward to contributing to the successes and traditions that we've heard about even tonight of this great district. I noticed on the district website that it mentions that this district is said to be made up of a group of individuals that work together as one to benefit the students of this great community. I look forward to joining that team, and thank you, and am so honored to be here tonight. Thank you.
Goodness.
Welcome. Look forward to meeting you.
Welcome to the guys' country.
Good job, man. Good job.
Welcome. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Five minutes. Okay, we're good. All right, we'll get back in session. Time is 7:15. It's fun to congratulate and very exciting. It's a fun time of the year, and we are ready to move on to our next item, which is number, item 5A, under administration. Receive information regarding the naming process for new Conroy ISD campus and facilities.
All right, so we will kick off the naming of our new facilities here, and Ms. Blake Locke will share with us our process.
Good evening, President Hubert, members of the board, and Dr. Noel. I'm excited tonight to share information with you about our next round in the naming process. So a quick overview of the timeline. Tonight, I'm gonna share information. Then tomorrow, on our website, a forum will go up, and then we will start accepting names from the public. I'll be back in May and present those names to you. And then we'll be back in June for you to discuss and potentially select one of those names for one of your own choosing for a facility. The first facility that we'll be seeking names for is Flex 22. This is the next elementary in the Grand Oaks feeder. It will be opening in August of 2023 at 4550 Lexington Boulevard. And right now, it's projected to serve students in grades K through four. The second elementary, and I apologize, this is just a placeholder rendering. It's still very early in the development process of this school. But the next school is Flex 23, and it will be serving both the Candy Creek and Conroy feeders. This elementary will open in August of 2024, and it'll be in the area of FM 1484 and Airport Road. And again, anticipated to serve students in grades K through four. And then because we have so many wonderful buildings in our district, some of them without name attribution, some of them under construction, such as the maintenance facility you heard about at a previous meeting, we decided to add a miscellaneous district facilities category to solicit names for some of those other general spaces should you decide to want to honor someone or someplace or something with a name for that facility. So those will be presented to you as well for your consideration. CW local and board policy outlines the rules for this process. And since our two main facilities are elementaries, really, the door is wide open. It can be, they can be named after a person, a place, someone of note. They can be named after a geographic area. It's wide open. So with that, I will be back next month to present the names. And this will go online in about the middle of the day tomorrow, and then we'll put it out on social media and share it with everybody. Any questions? Yes, sir.
Which miscellaneous facility?
Well, the maintenance facility could be one. I don't know if there are any others in mind, but pretty much any facility that doesn't have a name attached to it.
Like we have, like the auditorium doesn't have a name. Just Conroy ISD and auditorium. So we have, we have a few facilities that are just generically named. You wouldn't, you don't have to add a name to them. We're just adding this generic category, so you would have that option if you so choose.
So you'll have a bank of names should you so desire to name a facility. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, item B, consider resolution to allow submission of application to TEA for a county/district campus number for a virtual hybrid school. All right, Dr. Heinz.
Thank you. Good evening, President Hubert, members of the Board of Trustees, Dr. Noel. Tonight, come before you to ask for your consideration, approval of a resolution supporting the district's application to the Texas Education Agency to apply for a county/district campus number for, this will allow us to begin a virtual or hybrid school. This is really the first step. Just to kind of rewind a little bit, last year, we came before you and started the process. But the bill got held up and didn't get passed in May, and so we ended up not doing the program. And then when, when the school year started, we scrambled and began a hybrid kindergarten, or pre-K through sixth grade program at the last minute, but we weren't able, because we started at the last minute, we didn't really get to hire for this. And so this is kind of our attempt number two, Senate Bill 15 passed during the fall. And so we know that there is one year of eligibility. We have budgeted one year of funds in our ESER funds for this program. And right now, our game plan is to start off with grades five through eight. So we want to narrow our focus and limit the size of enrollment. So we're looking at probably a maximum of 60 per grade level, and it may even be less. There will be an application process, as we were planning to do last year, where students have to apply based on engagement, attendance, and academic success. And, you know, currently, I think our, our big incentive for this is that when we, when we started down this road during the 2021 school year, and we did this for a whole year, we learned that there's a very small, but, but there are, there are a group of individuals that actually did well in this environment, and it's something that we think there's a niche for. It's not a big, broad niche, but we'd like to, to get another year of working at it on a very focused and dedicated program. Teachers would be full-time in this area, with the exception that we may have to supplement some electives with some part-time people. But generally, the core subject teachers would be full-time in the virtual environment. And that's really the goal of, of starting this process. So it begins with your permission or approval of this resolution, which would give us the ability to apply for a campus number, which then gives us a place to kind of put students and staff and begin the process of creating what is really a virtual school.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Motion as presented.
Second. Motion and second. Questions, discussion? Yes, sir.
I have a couple of questions, Dr. Heinz. So the, the Senate bill that was passed allows virtual school? You just have to go through the TEA process?
We do, and it expires. It's only a one year. So, you know, we don't know if we can do it beyond next year, but we don't know.
What about funding? If we're using ESER funds for a year, that's great. But then if we're not gonna be able to receive funding from the state, that would have to come out of our budget somewhere.
Right, so the goal for us would be that if there is no path forward with funding on its own through attendance, then we would not be able to do it.
Okay.
And I think that's just the reality. But we're also, you know, one of the things I'm worried about is if we're not doing it, if for some reason districts that are doing it are grandfathered in, and we're not participating, then we miss that window. And that actually happened back about 20 years ago. There's about five public school districts in Texas that offer virtual programs, and they were grandfathered in previously. And so I don't know if that's gonna happen or not, but I really don't, you know, it's just a possibility that if we're not doing it, we won't have that opportunity.
I, I like the idea tremendously. Is there opportunity to expand the program if we are approved?
Absolutely.
Funding provided, it can be expanded as well.
Yes, absolutely. And so we've talked about, you know, bringing the program perhaps down some grades and going up and adding a grade and going into high school. And the one thing we learned through our planning last year before we stopped is the high school's complicated because you get into electives and pathways and some things that we have to do. And so one of the options, if you'll notice in our application, we also use the word hybrid. And that seems to be a real common solution for some school districts that do this at the high school level where you actually just work in conjunction with their homeschool, and you make it a hybrid. It also makes it easier for a student to participate in extracurricular that way. So that's something that we're gonna spend a year working on and really looking at how to build it up. And so that's one option. We've, we've talked about starting with eighth grade and then maybe adding a grade. But, but it's also possible that we would look at a hybrid solution for ninth, for high school.
Thank you. I like that idea.
Any other questions?
How much funding is set aside for one year?
It's about one and a half million right now for year one.
So this would be, this program would be only available to students in our district?
Correct. It would be just school, students that are enrolled in our school district.
Okay, and so the curriculum that we have now, would we try to make it fit into this? Or would we, would we still have our same, you know, the same rigor and also the same requirements? What am I trying to say? We use TECS. Would we still be using TECS? Would we still be using?
Yes, sir. So absolutely. So we want to teach the same high-level course, and we want to make sure that students are prepared for those assessments and exit level tests. And so that is the game plan, and that's why it'll be a combination of certainly some in-person class time as well as some asynchronous work as well. But there'll be a synchronous component. And there are requirements in Senate Bill 15 that we will fulfill, but that's a big part of it, is that this is not a less-than option. It would be a very rigorous commitment. And, and that's the thing that, that we learned in the first go-around, in, in the first year that we did this, is there were students that were very successful, who were committed, and they were engaged, and there were those who didn't. And certainly, what we've learned from that is this is not for everyone. And just because you want to do it doesn't mean it's the right fit. And so we want to take some steps in that area.
Would this be, is a thought process to capture students that were, that were losing to other resources? Or is this just to provide an additional service to our, our district?
I think from a, from a standpoint of a student enrollment, absolutely. We know that we're losing students to either charter schools or private schools or other Texas public school districts. And we don't have this year's numbers yet, but my guess is there's probably at least 200 or 300 students that currently live in our school district that attend public schools outside of our school district for virtual learning. And there's no guarantees by us offering that those students would return to us. But I do think it's in our best interest to begin to look at all the different ways that we can begin to meet the educational needs of our clientele. And so that's just one more possibility of a way to serve our students and our families.
Did SB 15 specify that these students will be counted towards our ADA?
It does, for one year. And beyond that, there's no, no decisions.
Any others questions, comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion show by the uplifted hand. Any opposed by the same sign? All right, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item 6A, consider approval of guaranteed maximum price amendment for the Collins Intermediate School PE Classroom Edition project and authorize the superintendent to negotiate and execute the contract documents. All right, Mr. Foster.
Good evening, President Hubert, members of the board and Dr. Noel. It's my pleasure to bring forward your consideration and approval of the Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment for our Collins Intermediate School PE Classroom Edition project. If you recall, back in January of 2020, your board selected GTT to be our general contractor, construction manager at risk for the PE Classroom Editions projects. We started with Runyon, moved to Wilkerson, and then now our final project at Collins. Since then, our design group, our design team, the DLR Group, GTT, and Conroy ISD worked together to develop our scope of work for this project. We advertised, GTT received the bids, and that together we negotiated the guaranteed maximum price of $7,180,817. And at this time, we're requesting your approval.
Okay, do we have a motion? We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion, conversation, questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion show by the uplifted hand. Any opposed by the same sign? Motion carries, Mr. Foster. Moving to item B, consider acceptance of the Conroy High School 2017 renovation construction project.
At this time, we request your approval via, as, well, your accepting as complete the Conroy High School 2017 renovations project. Born out of our 2015 bond referendum, this project added additional classroom space at Conroy High School. And if you recall, not long ago, we added a change order, adding money to that project to kick off the project that is currently underway, our Phase Two of that master plan. So I'm happy to say that Phase One, the 2017 project, is complete. We successfully kicked off Phase Two. We've been through the accounting. We've closed the project, and Conroy ISD feels and certifies that Conroy High School 2017 renovations construction project is complete. As you might expect, we expended all of the money kicking off, completing the 2017 project and kicking off Phase Two. So there is no savings and no returned allowances from this contract. And we expect the final payment of about $1.2 million to be issued to LSOR Constructors upon this approval.
Okay.
I move we accept the Conroy High School renovation construction project.
All right, we have a motion?
Second.
We have a second. All right, any questions? All right, call the vote. All those in favor show by the uplifted hand. Any opposed by the same sign? Seeing none, motion carries, Mr. Foster. How about a, how about a capital improvement update?
Certainly. This time, I'd like to give you an update on what we've got going on throughout the district. I'm gonna start you with our safety and security project for the 2022 school year. Or actually, 2022 calendar year. So just like before, it's not a whole lot you can see. The project handles security cameras, server upgrades, access controls, the Secure Vest Vial upgrades. It's a district-wide effort. These are the campuses that we're working on for 2022, and the project is currently on schedule and is working nicely in the evenings and weekends, not disrupting campuses as we're making those upgrades. So the work is underway, and it's scheduled to be complete on time. And then later in this year, we'll bid and bring you the 2023 installment as we move throughout the district. Moving on to Campus Renovations 2022, our major scope of work this year is the Galatas Elementary, which is a systems, building systems upgrade, the air conditioning and the fire alarms and all the other things above the ceiling that, that tend to wear out over the life of campus. So Galatas Elementary is next up. So Galatas Elementary is next up. We've been procuring equipment, getting ready for the summer. So as soon as the students break for the summer break at the end of May, we'll go to work in earnest in that campus, replacing those items and getting it back together for the return in August when the students return from their, for next school year. At Creighton Elementary, this is overhaul the Creighton campus where we're anxious awaiting summer break as well, so we can continue to work at that campus and expand the kitchen and serving lines to better serve the student capacity at that campus. Currently, everything is procured and on its way, so when the summer comes, we'll work in earnest, break through those walls into the building addition we created this past school year, and expand that kitchen and serving line on schedule. Now, our new Morehead Junior High School, which is our junior high school out in, next to Canyon Creek High School in their feeder zone. As you can see from the overhead picture, the site work is, is wrapping up nicely. You can see the athletic venues and the track coming together. The building structure is complete, and the envelope is coming together. We're very close to the dry-in period on that, on that campus, as the progress on the campus is going along nicely. It's scheduled to open in August of 2023. At Conroy High School is our major renovation project where we're overhauling the whole operation and organization of that campus. Starting on the left side of the screen is our CTE building, so it's surrounding the current band hall. You can see the roof deck is being installed on that campus. Moving up to the top center is the nice dirt area, which will be the new JV field track and the athletic venue, which with some good weather and time on our side, we'll have ready for football in August. So that'll be a synthetic turf field for, for the football program to use while we continue our work throughout that program. And then as we move on to the, to the right-hand side of the screen is the new gym, locker rooms, and other facilities that, once we're opened over the next school year, will allow us to facilitate the transitions and start moving departments around that campus as the project continues on. Overall, the project is on schedule and will be on that campus through the calendar year 2025. Now, Flex School Number 21, which is Gordon Reed Elementary School on the west side of our school district, that campus is moving along nicely. We're cleaning up the site work. You can see we're installing the landscaping and things of that nature around the outside of that building. It is scheduled to open in August for next school year. We will take possession on the inside of that building this summer, outfit it with teachers and all the learning materials, and open it for students in August on schedule. Now, Oak Ridge High School, this is an overhaul project, is also our South County CTE facility. The, the progress on that site is moving along nicely now that we've got steel and going vertical. The bottom center of the screen is the new administration area of the building, which will serve as the new front door when we're done with this project. Up, kind of in the upper middle part is the new central plant, which is the heart and soul of the big overhaul of that campus, where we're increasing, or rather, replacing the end-of-life service units and upgrading the overall mechanical systems to better serve that campus. This summer, we go to work on the inside of the campus at a, at a feverish pace to get a lot of work done on the interior hallways and start moving walls and things on the inside to create the new, the new Oak Ridge High School. Overall, the project is on schedule and will be at Oak Ridge through August of 2023. Now, Conroy High School is our ninth-grade classroom additions project, which you heard about from Mr. Bush earlier this evening. So that classroom addition on the inside is essentially done and ready for us to take possession of later this school year and move into this summer. So the work now is really on the outside of that building as we make the transitions in grade from the high parking lots down through the building addition into the existing academic campuses. So that work is on schedule. Like I said, we're gonna turn it over for our use for next school year on schedule. At Flex School Number 22, which the naming process is now underway, that site, south of Grand Oaks High School, you'll see in the top part of the picture, you can see Grand Oaks High School from this angle. The building pad is complete, and the building foundations are underway. The building is on schedule and scheduled to open in August of 2023, as Ms. Blakelock said earlier. So this time next year, these pictures will look like Gordon Reed does currently. So that project, like I said, is on schedule and moving along very nicely. Now, our new maintenance and child nutrition facility, which is here in the city of Conroy, you can see the site work. The existing building that was there is no longer there, and our, the city's been working with us on the clearing permits and the building permits. So the, the clearing effort on that site has been, has begun, and all the tree preservation areas have been marked. So that project is moving along very nicely, and is scheduled to open in the summer of 2023. Canyon Creek High School is our upgrade project for the, their transition to the 6A population. So last month was all about demolition. This month is about restructuring the inside of those facilities. So you can see here, the, the slabs cut out to help us reorganize the plumbing and everything for the new locker rooms as they're going through and making those upgrades to that campus. Overall, that project is currently on schedule. It has a phased turnover as we complete different portions of that building and move throughout the, the athletics portion of that building. But it is on schedule and will be on that site through the summer of 2023. And that's our update.
Nothing else is going on, though?
That's it. I've, I've gotten more, so the list gets longer next month.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for that update. Moving on to seven A, which is purchasing, consider award of RFP 22-02-02 Fire Protection System Inspection Testing Monitoring Maintenance and Parts. Alright, Mr. Reeves. Mr. Rick Reeves.
Good evening, President Hubert, members of the board, and Dr. Knoll. Tonight, we're requesting that the board considers awarding RFP Number 22-02-02 Fire Protection Systems Inspection Testing Monitoring Maintenance and Parts to the following vendors for an estimated annual expenditure of $650,000. Those vendors are American Fire Protection Group, Balu Fire Systems, Hurricane Fire Protection LLC, Impact Fire Services, Mosley Fire and Safety Incorporated, SCI Alarms, also known as Scott Communications Incorporated, VFP Fire Systems, and Wilson Fire Equipment and Service Company. Request for proposals pertaining to the purchase of fire protection systems for the district was emailed to registered vendors through our electronic CIC e-bidding system, advertised on CSD purchasing website, and also two times in the courier. Vendors were asked to offer firm unit prices for fire protection systems, equipment inspections, monitoring, and materials. Vendors were also asked to offer a shelf or catalog discount for additional similar items not listed in those line items. Pricing shall be firm for one year through April of 2023, automatically renewing annually for two additional one-year terms through April of 2025. We had eight vendors submit a response. This proposal was evaluated by the maintenance department and reviewed by the purchasing department. Best value offers are recommended for board award. The funds are for these purchases provided in the general fund, and at this time, we request your approval.
So move.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions? Yes, sir.
You said it was a three-year contract at 650 annually?
Yes, sir.
So 1.9?
Yes, sir.
Some change?
Mm-hmm.
Anything else? Alright, fair enough. All those in favor of the motion, show by uplifted hand. Any opposed by the same sign? Alright, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Reeves. Moving on to item B, consider award of RFP 22-02-05 Leveling Up Literacy.
Once again, we're requesting that the board considers awarding RFP Number 22-02-05 for leveling up literacy to the following vendors for expenditures not to exceed 13 million over the duration of this contract through April of 2025. The recommended vendors are GL Group Incorporated, also known as Book Source, Heinemann, Okapi Educational Publishing, Superior Text, and Textbook Warehouse. Requests for proposal pertaining to the purchase of these literacy materials for the district were emailed to registered vendors through the electronic CIC e-bidding system and advertised on the CSD purchasing website, and also two times in the courier. Vendors were asked to offer firm unit prices for these literacy materials, which the primary goal is to both boost the current state of instructional resources and literacy on campuses and create greater, greater equity throughout the district in grades K through six. Vendors were also asked to offer a shelf or catalog discount for additional similar items not listed in these line items. Pricing shall be firm for one year through April of 2023, automatically renewing annually for two additional one-year terms through April 30th of 2025. We did have eight vendors submit a response. The proposal was evaluated by the teaching and learning department and reviewed by the purchasing department. Best value offers are recommended for board award. Funds for these purchases are provided through general and federal funds, and at this time, we request your approval.
Okay.
Considering the amount of time I spend asking questions on this, the least I can do is make the motion to approve.
Very good. We have a motion, but will anybody second it?
I get the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional questions? Just more?
How, how much would you say? Did you say this?
13.
It'll be 13 over the, over the three years.
13 million?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Seeing none, call the vote. All those in favor of the motion, show by the uplifted hand. Any opposed by the same sign? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Reeves.
Thank you.
Alright. Moving to item A. Moving to item eight A, finances, consideration and approval of an order authorizing the issuance, sale, and delivery of Conroy Independent School District Unlimited Tax School Building Bond Series 2022A, setting certain parameters for the bonds, authorizing the superintendent and chief financial officer to approve the terms thereof, levying a tax and providing for the sec, the security and payment of such bonds and enacting other provisions related thereto. Alright, Mr. Rice.
Good evening, President Hubert, members of the board, and Dr. Knoll.
Tell us what that meant.
Make our titles as long as possible. Tonight, we're recommending the board approve the order authorizing the issuance, sale, and delivery of Conroy Independent School District Unlimited Tax School Building Bond Series 2022A, setting certain parameters for the bonds, authorizing the superintendent and chief financial officer to approve the terms thereof, levying a tax and providing the security and payment of such bonds and enacting other provisions related thereto. This will be the final sale from the 2019 bond referendum, and the approximate new issue amount is $165.1 million. The bond sale will provide funds for building a new elementary in the Canyon Creek-Conroy feeder zones, renovations and additions to Conroy High School, Oak Ridge High School, Canyon Creek High School, Lamar Elementary, Rice Elementary, Hauser Elementary, Geesinger Elementary, Oak Ridge Elementary, North County Transportation, various safety and security projects, numerous campus renovations, technology, and buses. Mr. John Robuck, the district's financial advisor, is here this evening to present our schedule of events and answer any questions that you may have. Mr. Robuck?
Thank you, Mr. Rice. President Hubert, members of the board, Dr. Knoll, good evening. Thank you for having me tonight. We are here before you to ask you to approve a parameter order to issue the fourth and final authorization or bond sale from your 2019 bond authorization. I do have a scheduled events presentation to go through. This first slide is overview of the municipal bond market. I've spent the majority of my time on this because this is probably the most important thing when going to sell bonds. We are in an interest rate environment right now that is, is really volatile. It's, it's, rates are moving up almost daily. You'll see some drops occasionally, but most of them moving up, and it's all because inflationary fears and price gasoline and Fed funds, trying to, you know, raising the Fed funds. And I think they're gonna raise it more than they're projected initially, early in the year. We initially thought it was gonna be 25 basis points per session, probably closer to 50 basis points. So in talking with Mr. Rice and going through your, the financing plan, we thought it might be a good idea to get this in front of you now and maybe take advantage of locking in rates sooner rather than later. And I do want to point out one other thing. So as rates are rising, we also have a May election schedule that we've never seen before. We have 113 school districts on the ballot in May for almost $16.5 billion. Put that in context, that's over 10% of the school districts in the state of Texas who went up for bond elections in May. So if those, a good percentage have passed, 70 calls, 70% passed, now they're not gonna issue all of it one time, but we're gonna see a lot of bond issues in the market, and that'll probably happen in late June, early July. So if we get in the market before that, we lock in lower rates before they go up to any higher, and we get in front of those other bond issues from the other school districts. So that's why we're here tonight. Next page is estimated debt service requirements. Again, this is the remaining authorization, 165 million, 70,000 of bonds proceeds. We are generating a little bit of premium. Premium is not as big as it used to be. Investors not paying 5% coupons. They're wanting more 4% coupons because of the rise in the interest rate environment. And we structured this around your existing debt and also in an effort to minimize any tax rate impact. To accomplish the, sell this bonds, we're here tonight asking you to approve the parameter order. We're gonna submit the PSF. If you all approve this tonight, start working on the preliminary official statement, have rating calls the week of May 9th, and then sell the bonds the week of June 6th. Again, this is a permit order, so if we get to this date in June and the market's not favorable, we can, we can wait.
Right.
We have, we have the ability to stop, and this will be through communication with Mr. Rice and Dr. Knoll to make sure that we get the best favorable rate for the district. If that happens, we will close the bond issue in July 7th. There's about 30-day period between when we sell and close. Attorney General has to approve the bond issue. And hopefully, we can, you know, with your, with your rating, with permanent school fund guarantee with AAA, I think we'll lock in some good rates and move on down the road. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you have with the presentation or with the parameter order.
Okay. Before we do that, I think we should call, let me, let me go ahead and call, call a motion.
I make a motion, we sell as fast as we can.
So-
We're trying.
So we have a motion and a second. Now, I'd like to open it up for, for questions. I'd like to go first. I know we all have questions. Did you have some questions?
No, I see the big picture, and this is a great idea, Mr. Rice. I, I know that's what you get paid for, but I mean, just want to applaud you for your foresight. I didn't even think about that. We all know rates are going up, but to put this out there and get it ahead of time, you know, with that $16.5 billion on the bonds, this cheap money's going away quickly.
Do you have?
No, I know, I'm good.
I, I got a couple of questions for you. So I, 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 for safe face value, I like the idea. My question is, will we be able to spend the money with the projects? Like, we, I understand that there's, Mr. Foster just gave a, a great presentation about all the projects that are going on, and then you just listed off, I don't know, 10 or 12 more projects. So do we have the, the ability to start these projects and, and spend this money? If we issue it, then the clock's ticking to pay these things off?
Yes, we have the five, the five years. We will, we will get all those projects done within that five-year window. The, the majority of the money's gonna go to the new elementary school, to Conroy High School and Oak Ridge High School. So that, that's our big-ticket items right there, that, and the, and those projects will be done by 2025.
Right. And we are fast-forwarding the issuance of these by how much?
One year.
One year? Okay. But you don't see an issue with getting these projects going?
No, sir. I've, we've been working with Mr. Foster and his, and his group, and they feel very comfortable with the projects getting on task and getting done.
Okay.
What's, what's the, sorry, interrupt.
Go ahead, please. Go ahead.
What's the dollar value, potential opportunity cost, if you will? If we wait that year, an interest rate move against us, let's say, two, two percentage points, 200 basis point, or 100 basis point, 1%?
It's, for this amount of money, it's, it's a large delta you'd be seeing.
I was just making a point, but yeah.
I like math. I can do that fast in my head. I like math, I can do that fast man, I'm sorry.
That's my point, that's where we're at.
In fact, I just, I had maybe just a couple of clarifying questions. We're, we're not adjusting our construction schedule, correct? So Mr. Foster's construction schedule will still stay the same?
Correct.
So it's still, it'll still function as he had it planned?
Yes.
Yes, it will. So we're not going to have to move construction forward a year. We'll just stay on our normal schedule. And then, second of all, just, just for the sake of clarity, we will not need to adjust the tax rate to fund this, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
That, that wasn't my question. I understand that. My, my, my thought was, maybe you've answered it, but we're, if we issue this a year early, should we not then try to start those projects a year early? Because if the money's sitting there, we're paying for it, but it's not being utilized? That, that's kind of my question. Can you answer that or address that?
I mean, we could, we're, we're, we're really only six months early from our, you know, because we're six months removed, removed from our last sale, so we're really only about six months early. And, and I'm sure Mr. Foster and his crew, you know, can look at and analyze whether some of those projects need to be kicked off early. You know, the one thing we got to remember, the project at Conroe High is ongoing, and there, and there's $100 million in this sale that is Conroe High School. So, you know, that is the, the one thing we need to remember, that, that project is ongoing. The other large is, is the one elementary school, Flex 23, that we're selling the funds for that, and then, and then the completion of Oak Ridge High School. Those are our, our, our big projects that we have in there. So, so Conroe High's ongoing, and then, and then the new flex school.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
So just to be clear, I, I, so make sure this is a 30-year bond?
25.
25? Just ballpark it in your head, I don't know if you can quick enough, but if you multiplied that 147, say 150 by 3% on a 30-year, backtrack a little, you're probably about $40 million difference?
Yeah, that's what I came up about, $40 million by doing it a year early. So I think even if, if I'm saying this, I think even if we had the money sitting in the bank, the payments on that, that would be cheaper, even if it was a year, than the $40 million on the back end of this, if it goes up a basis point.
Understood.
I mean, I'm just, if that, if that helps the board any, make a decision, even if we have to let it sit, we're still cheaper.
I think it's good. I, I just at least want to have a conversation. Yes, I, I'm in the, I'm of the opinion that interest rates are going up. I truly believe that. We're not, we haven't seen it peak just yet. So I, I am in agreement with that. I like that idea.
Just to piggyback on that?
I just want to make sure that Mr. Foster's not squirming out the back door there as we're throwing more projects on his, on his plate.
He didn't say hi to me.
He said he's good. He said he's good.
Okay.
Was it one thumb, or did you, did he cisco-liberated us, or was it just, he just ciscoed us?
Very good. Any other questions or thoughts?
Yep.
Yes, sir.
Sure do.
Thank you.
Want to make sure I got them in. Have we considered arbitrage because of rates?
Arbitrage and the new money? Sorry.
Yep, and the new money.
Well, if we spin it within three years, which I think is the plan, 80% in three years, we don't have to worry about arbitrage.
You think we're going to, I, I worry about with supply chain and the number of projects going on. I think we'd get it done in five. I don't think, I, I, I worry about that. I just don't, I just want us to consider it. If we haven't done some financial models, we need to go back in and look at that. Because with rising rates, we're locked in. And then we're got, there could be some arbitrage in there.
There could be. I, I have to, if you earn.
Yeah, I know there's, I know there's a, yeah.
We, we haven't even been close to arbitrage in so many years.
I know, that's why I'm thinking about it, because I remember those days.
That is a good, that is a good point, and we will definitely, we will definitely look into that.
Yeah, I just think we need to look into that a little bit.
I think we're okay, but we're looking.
It doesn't sway me enough, but I, I think what we're doing is the right move as well. I just think we need to consider that, because I don't think that's been considered. Like you said, rates have been so low that you couldn't earn anything, so it didn't matter. But now with rates rising, and the two and the 10-year inverting a little bit here and there, you may get, get to a point where you have some arbitrage.
I think Mr. Robuck showed us a little over 3%. On the interest rate. And, and where we.
Yeah, but in a year, you may be able to earn five.
Correct.
Right.
Right.
And there's your arbitrage right there.
And it's, it's, arbitrage is a bad word, but it means you're earning more than you're paying, which you've got to make a difference back.
Right. Right. Because the idea is, we're not supposed to be making, we're not, we're not supposed to be making money off of this. Right, right, right. Okay.
What?
That doesn't give you permission to tank on the investment.
I'm just trying to get a low rate for you guys.
We, we, yeah, we get everything we can.
I want a low rate.
We need to get as much money we can.
Understood.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I had a question for Mr. Sanders. Just, just approximately, Mr. Sanders, what do you think on 147 million arbitrage? Would it be 2%, 3%? Do you have any idea?
I don't know.
Where that number would be to make it?
That's why I wanted to run the models.
I usually run it like 2%. But, but I think, personally, I think rates are going to go up more than 2% in the next five.
Well, I, I agree with you. I, I think, as Mr. Robuck said, I think the Fed's going to move 50 basis points pretty quick.
Yeah, okay.
And, and in May, and, and we've got some other, I think at least two more 50 basis points coming this year.
And really, arbitrage is calculated based on the unspent proceeds after the.
Correct, that's right.
After the three years.
Correct.
And you've got 8% that you're not subject to it, so.
I just wanted to throw it out there because not something.
We haven't had to worry about this in.
Forever.
Fifteen years or so.
Exactly, yeah. I'm just an old banker, I'm sorry.
Good question, very good question.
Yeah, these are great questions. Thanks for being, everybody being a steward of the, of the tax dollars. This is important to have this conversation. Any other questions, thoughts? All right, I'll call the, call a motion. All those in favor show by the uplifted hand. Any opposed by the same sign? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Rice.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Item B, consider approval of the 2022-2023 Employee Group Health Program. All right, Mr. Rice?
Yeah, tonight, we're requesting the board consider approval of the employee medical coverage rates and plan design for the self-funded health insurance program. First, I would like to thank Tiffany Matfield, Paula Green, the Employee Benefits Committee, our health consultant, Gallagher, and Maggie Parker is here this evening with Gallagher, and she'll answer any difficult questions that y'all might have for her. And just thank them for all their hard work on the plan design. So if anybody from the Employee Benefits Committee is here this evening, if you would please stand and be recognized. Really, a lot of hard work goes into this. You know, a lot of difficult decisions are made, and, and, and really applaud them for their work. The district's self-funded group health insurance program is designed to provide the district employees a quality health plan at a reasonable cost. With the change to Blue Cross Blue Shield as the district's health plan administrator, the district is able to provide its employees with savings of 5.5% in health plan cost. This is in contrast to medical cost trends increasing at 6.5%. Medical plan networks offered by Blue Cross Blue Shield include the Blue Premier, Blue Essentials, and Blue Choice Networks. We are recommending premium decreases in most plans, along with slight alignment plan design changes for the 2022-2023 plan year. Both changes are recommended as were presented at the April 5th board workshop. CISD believes its benefit plans will continue to be offered at competitive rates as compared to our peer districts and with TRS. The total projected health plan cost will be $51.1 million, which is $2.8 million below the current plan year, with CISD funding 60% of our health plan cost and employee premiums funding the remaining 40%. At this time, I recommend your approval.
I recommend approval, motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and second. Questions?
Just have a comment.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Rice, like you and like the committee members, this is a great opportunity for Conroe ISD to be able to lower rates for our employees. Given the consideration of our economic times and, and things costing more, to be able to know I can go to the doctor as a teacher or a staff member at a school and know that it's going to cost me less than it did last year, or, or that, you know, I, there's some savings created there, I truly want to applaud all of y'all for that, because everybody that I talk to, nobody is mentioning our rates going down as far as healthcare. And I just want to say thank you for all you do and your diligence in that effort.
On, on behalf of the Employee Benefits Committee, yeah, thank you.
Another? All right, saying none. Call the vote. All those in favor of the motion show by the uplifted hand. Any opposed by the same sign? Motion carries. Thank you very much. All right, receive financial reports. Ms. Garzen.
Good evening, President Hubert, members of the board and Dr. Knoll. It is my pleasure this evening to present the financial statements as of March 31st. Our first statement is the balance sheet. The balance sheet shows the district's assets and liabilities and fund balance. Presented here is the general fund, the debt service fund, child nutrition, and self-funded insurance. Our next statement is the income statement. The income statement shows the district's revenues and expenditures. Our revenues comes from three major sources, local, state, and federal. Taking a closer look at our local revenue, our largest generator in the general fund and debt service fund is, of course, our tax collections. In child nutrition, food sales, and in self-funded insurance, premium contributions. Our 2019 bond referendum update, funds expended and encumbered $400.2 million, remaining $251.3. We have sold $488.5, with a remaining balance of $165 that was approved this evening. That would complete the final sale of all bonds authorized in the 2019 bond referendum. Our self-funded insurance update, we are running at a deficit year-to-date of just over $2.2 million. Revenue for the month of March was $4.5 million, expenditures $5.5 million for a deficit for the month of March, just over $1 million. Participation at our wellness centers is averaging $356 for the year. Our investments as of March 31st par value $761 million. Yields are ranging from 28 basis points in the pools to our longer-term investments with TCG at 76 basis points. Our combined portfolio is at 34 basis points. We are slightly behind our, our benchmark, the 90-day T-bill. We will be playing catch-up probably for the remainder of the year, as we, we all know rates are rising, and so this will probably be the trend for the remainder of the calendar year as the Fed continues to raise rates. The 90-day T-bill is at 47 basis points. And that was our update.
Thank you, Ms. Garzen. I have a, one question, Ms. Garzen.
Yes, sir.
It's related a little bit back to the health insurance.
Yes, sir.
Fund. So I know that we've received some stop-loss payments. Do those go right back into the health fund?
They do, sir. They're represented here on the line that says pharmacy rebate stop-loss. There's a credit against the expense in that category, so that, that is a combination of our pharmacy rebates, and we have received to date two stop-loss payments.
Okay. Do we ever know those are coming?
We know in advance of them coming, yes. They do send us notification.
I mean, like, but not long in advance, I guess.
No.
Yeah, that's what I'm, that's what I'm getting at.
Weeks, usually.
I mean, you know they're coming a week or two, but not a month or better. Okay. How often do they look at those stop losses?
Um, I guess I'm not quite sure.
And are Gallagher representing?
They look at stop loss, if that's just.
I'm just asking the question.
When the claims are processed and they come in over the 550.
Right.
They're evaluated at that point.
So is that on a quarterly basis, monthly?
Yeah, we're notified daily on any, on any claim over a certain, over a certain amount.
Okay, okay, so you're aware then immediately, pretty much?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. And are we paying over that stop loss and then getting our money back?
We pay and then get reimbursed.
That's what I thought. Okay, all right. Thank you. I just want to understand that a little better. Thank you.
All right, very good. Moving on to item nine for legal, discuss TEA's Model Local School Board Policy, EFA library materials.
So this item was asked to be, to be placed on the agenda by Mr. Inman. I would just share that, you know, last week, TA came out with model plan. It was just released to us on Wednesday of last week. We were closed on Friday and Monday, so we haven't had, you know, really ample opportunity yet to get the details on it. I think it's certainly something that we would welcome your feedback on. We're, we're open to any discussion. The, the policies that you currently have in place have served us very well. It's not, it's not an area for us that we've had significant issues, we're proud to say, but at the same time, doesn't mean we can't get better. And so we're, we're certainly open to, you know, looking further into the recommendations that TEA made, but at this point, I don't believe that we're, feel like we're too educated enough to, to be able to give, make any recommendations to you or share much information, but just open, if there are any comments that you wanted to make, I guess we wanted to make that available.
Yeah, the only reason I asked for it to be on there was, some of you probably know, Commissioner Marath put a letter out last week, and, and if you've been watching the news, you see, school board meetings, I think I saw Cy Fair the other night, just kind of get out of control, and, and thank you, Dr. Knoll, we met the other day, we, we visited the other day and talked about it. I was just, tonight was just asking the board to look at this approximately seven-page letter, it's for a local policy that he's, Commissioner Marath's saying that, just a suggestion, something to start a framework, but at least to get our minds thinking about, do we want to do something to protect ourselves? I did meet with, there was, our Attorney General was in town the other night, we had dinner, the state of Texas, and, and there was people asking questions about, does this violate, is it 4234? Are there areas we're getting into pornography and other issues we're giving to children? I don't, I know that Conroe, I don't believe is, but do we want a policy that says, before anything happens, we want something in place? I think you and I talked some months ago, and, and I want to stress, this is not in any way, shape, or form to get teachers or, it's just to protect our kids and, and so we know what's in the, instead of being reactive, be proactive to this. And as a board, can we be proactive in some way, having a net that kind of filters through that? And I think we're doing an excellent job today, but will we be doing an excellent job in two years, five years, 10 years? Should we be proactive in this for 10 years down the road, or reactive to when our school board meeting lights up with people coming and reading books and, you know, I just don't want that, I want us to have something in, at least tonight, thinking, just a discussion, even not a discussion for us, but just to have you all look at that seven-page outline, read through it, and, and see what you think about all the different acronyms and teaching ideologies that are coming, and what are we going to do as a district moving forward? And, and to be proactive on it, instead of reactive. So that's the only reason I asked it to be on the, on the agenda, and I was just letting the other board know it's there, maybe all you didn't know about it, maybe you didn't, but this came out last week, and I know it's early, but again, I'm more of a proactive guy than a reactive guy. Okay? That's the only.
And our, our plan will be to get more information, we'll provide that to you in a future update, certainly. As I said, and, and I appreciate you mentioning that, certainly there may be other places that have had issues with this. We don't want to project their issues onto us. Our folks have done a wonderful job, and, and the, the policies that you all have in place and the procedures that we have put in place have served us really well, and as far as making sure those things have not made their way into Conroe ISD, and, and we, I think we're all in agreement here that we want to protect our kids and, and maintain the, you know, the highest level of education that we, we pride ourselves on, so we're, we're all in agreement on that. And as we get more information, we'll be happy to certainly share it, and, and for any future consideration you'd want to have.
Dr. Hines, would you mind sharing, just for the sake of being on, on record in this conversation, what you and Dr. Upshaw shared with me about the Heinemann Library Resources, and one of the reasons that they were selected was because they were the only vendor that pre-released the list of the books that were in those, those packs?
Yeah, to clarify for the rest of the board, we'd had a discussion about some of the materials that we were buying, and why did we pick some of them, and, and one of the criteria that we looked at, and, you know, it's one of those things that happens once and you learn, and we've had it before, we've ordered books, and they've substituted books in our classroom libraries, and we don't know that. And, and so one of the, one of the criteria for who we selected was, we know what books we're actually getting and will receive, and so that's important to us, and that's part of our, our current policy, your current board policy, I think it's EF Local, about how we select our materials.